I may put that together and send it to you and you can kind of look it over just.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Second, okay. Without objection, the agenda is approved. Consideration of the minutes from the November 20th planning commission meeting. Are there amendments or corrections to the minutes other than the ones that of course I was against?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Bob.
I think that's where you were. Yes. And you had an excused absence.
Yes.
I have the last, the first paragraph on page nine of nine. After Chair Lundby asked for a motion permitting a motion forward ZO 1801 for Dune Management and City with a recommendation that they consider the issue of dune grading, that's not right. It should say with the recommendation that they consider the issue of whether to dune grade or not.
Of whether dune grading should be permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
I have another question. Bob, didn't you vote?
I did.
Oops. Because I remember.
After everybody else had made their...
But you're not listed here, so.
I agree on that should be.
And what should your be, what should the vote be?
I already yes. Anything else?
On page three, the fourth paragraph from bottom where I was talking to United, I don't think the first sentence reflects what I actually said.
I don't remember, so I'm unhappy with what you remember.
I think it really ought to start with the second sentence. First sentence just...
Just take out the first sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense why I would say that. What I was really objecting to was the notion that meeting the desires of the owner as opposed to the co is something that troubles me.
Anything else?
And your name's not spelled correctly.
In the second to the last line of the paragraph.
Yeah.
No, I didn't want to get you to this.
Well, well, we're at that.
I understand my talking now. Okay, on page two of nine, the third paragraph, let's see, a sentence starting in the fourth line, this may apply since the structure would be going from one story to two, there will be a loss of property if the structure is accrued. I don't know what that sentence means.
I think what he meant is that the house would be bigger, the footprint of the house would be a little bit bigger. Do you want me to take it out?
That's, yeah, because the 40% lot coverage standard though would still be met, is that what it means?
But it wouldn't be exceeding the 40%.
You know, initially it's 30% lot coverage, but it goes to 35, so more coverage, that property's lost, but the 40% is still...
I mean, covered property, is there a word for the complement of lot coverage?
There'll be an increase, there will be an increase in lot coverage.
To 40%.
But it will be still less than 40%.
Yeah, without going back, I don't know if it reaches 40% or if it's less than 40%.
Or 40% or less.
It'll be a loss of...
That makes sense to me. On page seven, in the discussion under...
It'd still be that.
...five.
Right, 40% is still that.
Kerr said changes have been made to be reported and they need to start at the beginning. Did we go back and start at the beginning?
Where are they?
Page seven, under heading five. Fourth paragraph from the beginning of the paragraph, Kerr said changes have been made to be reported and they need to start at the beginning. I was thinking we had picked up where we partway through, no?
Well, I think, I think it's fine to start that again with Kerr directed the commission to page one. There was something that was still, that felt was still wrong, that's all.
Okay.
Because I don't understand what that first sentence means.
So we take the first sentence out?
Yeah, it's not clear to me.
Okay, thank you.
So the first sentence is removed?
Yeah, just directed to page one.
And finally, on page nine, after Chair Lundby asked for a motion, I think the first sentence should start out, Kerr made a motion to forward ZO 18-01 for Dune Management and CP 1801, right? You moved to approve the amendments both to the...
Comprehensive plan.
To the comprehensive plan as well as to the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
On page seven, the paragraph that Kerr wanted to remove, in the middle of that, Johnson said he asked questions with the whole process, I did not have any...
Oh, got it, okay.
I don't have questions about the whole process. The whole process is fine. I think what, I think maybe what they were implying was I was in agreement with Kerr about including no grading, but anyways.
Okay, having raised that, is the sentence after that correct? This is about the middle of the paragraph that's in the middle of the page. We're taking out the Johnson said he had questions with the whole process sentence.
Well, yes, I did say that. I was questioning why he had bothered going through the whole process.
I didn't remember whether, yeah, I know that you had raised that question before. Okay, so I'll take care of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as a meeting?
I move to approve the minutes as a meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, without objection, the minutes are approved. The next order of this is continuation of consideration of ZO 18-03 tree removal ordinance amendments. ZO 1803, City of Kansas requests a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter 17.73 removal. The proposed amendment addresses protection of trees from unintended damage during construction. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code section 17.86.070a amendments criteria. Consideration of this item has been continued most recently from the September 27, 2018 meeting. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Okay, going to that.
Chair Lundby, would you like a brief introduction?
Go for it.
Sure, in the absence of Mr. Adams, the community development director has asked me to sit in. You guys are probably more familiar with this tree ordinance than just about anything else except dune grading. And this was scheduled for your November 20 hearing, but it went, the discussion of dune grading essentially took the ability to consider it out, so it was rescheduled for tonight. And basically, we've been, you have been talking about this for a number of your meetings, and basically for your consideration, we've got attachment A, which is a city's current tree removal chapter. Attachment B, which continued what Mark had started with the color coded changes made at different places. And then C, attachment C was an attempt to sort of incorporate all those so that you could see what the finished product looked like and not get as distracted by the color coding. And ideally, you could take a look at what attachment C is, and if it meets your approval, make a recommendation to the city council. And with that, I think, I leave it to you to see where you want to go with it.
Okay, do you have any further changes that they think should be made or questions or anything about the type of kind of thing at the very end?
Well, another one, I can't read what this means. Except for interior renovations, existing structures and exterior renovations such as siding with data where there will be no ground disturbance, new construction.
No new construction.
Nope. Oh, okay, no new construction. Okay. I'm sorry.
Not easy to say.
Other issues. So in the final report, the material that's in attachment A is not included in the final report because what, I mean, attachment C or the changes?
Right, attachment A should be what's in effect right now. So you have that, you know, there's some references to it, you know, for example, the one that Commissioner Burge has identified, and just so you can go back and say, okay, that's inserted there.
Okay, so, yeah, so the tree replacement policy, the list of native trees, that's all intact, that's, that would be included in the...
I believe so.
Page three of four or...
Three of four.
Yeah. Page three, let me...
And did not change either this time, right?
And if you look at page 13 or 14, page five of attachment C, the only thing that changes in...
Sorry. Tree replacement policy. Yeah, I think, I think we're 14, this is very confusing. I assume, I haven't looked at the rest of this material, but I assume that there's something becoming between 1704.137 diameter breast height and 17.08. It must be, and I haven't looked at that.
Yeah, so chapter 1704 is, is the code's definition section, and so there's a whole list of definitions, and there's a 135 and a 140, and this gets, DBH gets inserted into the municipal code's definition section. So it doesn't change anything in chapter, I mean, in attachment A, you know, all the rest of the changes are to chapter 17. No, I apologize, not all the changes. Most of the changes are chapter 1770 where the tree removal is, but that's...
Yeah, it's too bad that we couldn't get, I guess, what I would have liked is a copy of the new ordinance as proposed, not one that has we jump back and forth to what the old one was into the new one. Because that, I mean, it's just, it's very difficult to read.
And part of the difficulty is they're making changes to multiple chapters, and so, you know, you've got 1708, 1710, 1712, 1714, 1720, 1790, 1744, and 1770 is where the, you know, there are more changes than anything else, and really, you know, that's, should be what attachment C is, is those changes, no, no, it goes elsewhere, so I apologize. No, and, you know, if you want to see all of chapter 1770 with those changes, you know, in with all the rest of it, we can bring that back to you.
Well, I'm saying, because to look at something piecemeal like that, it's really nice to see the whole picture, what, what you, what the final product would look like if these were approved, and this is almost impossible to do that unless you're just constantly flipping back and forth and, well, maybe, my mom doesn't work that way, I like to see.
See it in context.
So you're saying the complete, with changes and the changes working color.
Yes, I like to see it in context, that's exactly what I like, is to see the whole thing in context. But that's just me, I mean, if everyone else is fine with doing it this way, I'll go along with that.
I tend to agree, and I think for the benefit of the city council, it would be useful to have all the changes with one color that we approved as a body.
Inserted into the whole...
Right, so you can follow the changes as a counselor and also have a full context.
I mean, this is...
Yeah, I think this is hard to do, and I don't think, depending on what we do tonight with these, these changes.
Well, I'd be very unhappy for the council to get it in this format.
Yeah, I think, I think it...
Because I don't think, I think they'd have an even tougher time tracking it, seeing as they weren't intimately involved with revising it.
That, plus they haven't, they haven't been messing with it anyway as long as we have. So, so I do think that whatever goes with the council from this body ought to be the complete recommended document with the amendments clearly marked.
Chair, we ask to have everything we've got here plus the revised version of it, like with change bars in the margins or something, or how?
The whole thing with the revisions in one color.
And a light color, please.
Revisions, but then we also need to show if things were left out.
Taken out.
Deleted, those should be struck through.
Yeah, it should be a continuous duck.
Yeah, one of those things with the strike throughs and additions, and then you can see exactly what we changed, what we didn't change in the whole thing, and what was left intact.
It'll show if anything happened with that idea.
You need to be satisfied that what you're recommending makes sense, and if that's important to you, then that's what you need to see.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll just be a hell of a lot easier for them. It's going to be much more difficult for them to figure this stuff out than it is for us going back and forth. I mean, we've kind of, we've gotten used to it, I guess, with the trade.
Okay, I think there is a consensus that we're going to put this off another month and we're going to request that staff prepare a version as described.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say that we can still have some discussion this evening. There's things that we don't like.
If there's any, as I said, I've got one typography.
If I could just follow up on Commissioner Rizley, you said something about in light color?
Well, just some things, red is really tough to...
The yellow is preferable, I'd say.
Yeah, something like that.
So yellow highlighting or the text itself in...
Instead of all of these colors of highlighting, it's these dark colors because we ran out of colors.
Because I think places have one color.
Okay, you know, I just want to...
I understand, I understand what she's asking for.
Because red's a negative and black's a negative, and so they...
Just wanted...
And if you look at the very last, the next to the last one of attachment C.
B?
He has a blank. And you notice that you've got sort of British rather than American convention of the order of the common and the quotes. The diversity of the quotes outside the common.
Yep.
The very last.
So also on attachment C, the same thing, it was carried through there.
And therefore, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Anything substantive? Any other type?
What was your, what was your change there?
Height, comma, code, DBH, comma, code.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a consensus to ask to have that prepared and have here for next month's, next year's mission.
For the next commission.
For the next commission. Okay, we're up to the good of the order, I think.
I just want to ask you on number 12.
Oh, sure.
Of, of...
Attachment C.
That of section C, so that, number three. Could someone just explain that to me?
I think I can.
Okay.
Okay, the area, let's stop him when it gets... The area where a tree root structure might be impacted by excavation or if a soil compaction caused by vehicle traffic or storage of materials might affect a tree's health shall be known, that area shall be known as a tree protection zone TPZ. Okay, so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The TPZ is defined as a circle whose center, whose center is the center of the subject tree.
Okay.
And its radius, the radius of the circle, is two feet for each inch of trunk diameter, with the trunk diameter being measured at 4.5 feet above grade, otherwise known as diameter breast height.
Okay, so... The second, not the...
Okay, let's...
The second.
If it's, if it's confusing you, it's going to confuse, confuse a lot of other people, so let's fix it.
I'm not confused by it.
Well, you know, a tree.
Well, I mean, we're saying that we're, you know, you, if you have vehicle transportation over an affected root system or a storage material building that would affect the root system, that's what they're addressing here.
And what this is, if we back up a step further and go back to the previous page, Q says if you're going to ask for a tree removal permit to construct a structure development, that application has to include certain things.
Okay.
And what this includes is on the diagram, these areas that show the TPZ, so, you know, we can identify the TPZs.
So it's two feet for, for...
You almost had to stick it to your head.
Inch of radius, radius, not diameter.
That's okay.
So you have to have, you have to have two feet from the tree for each inch of diameter.
Of diameter, okay, okay. And we, and we, I know that we went through that a lot to determine if that was what was, that we all were of mind that it was the best thing for the health of the tree.
Right, because I think some municipals call for just one foot for each inch of diameter, but we were asking for two feet.
Okay, just trying to remember that. Because I remember the discussion, I remember being a little bit lost during it, but sort of deferring to the expertise on trees on this mission, and I just wanted to make sure I could justify or understand exactly.
Lundby asked you as whether you think it would make things better or worse to, to take that last sentence essentially and stick it in the...
Definitions.
In the definitions section that we were, what were we doing with the definitions?
Adding DBH to the, adding DBH diameter breast heights.
Yeah.
And we could add TPZ into the definitions section and take it out of here.
With that, that way by the time, it doesn't, it doesn't get incorporated into that bullet point, but instead gets stuck over and...
Well, for me, a drawing would work. I need a picture, so while you're talking, I'm drawing a picture in my head, okay, that's fine.
The real problem with that sentence is you're talking about radius of one thing and diameter.
And diameter, and that's why I'm so confused, yeah, that's exactly what, that's exactly what we have.
If we put it in terms of radius in both cases, for each inch of trunk, not of trunk?
No, because that's a different figure.
No, that's, yeah.
That's a different number, yeah.
Basically, it's, it's making it seem like the result is going to be less than it really is going to be, I mean, in a sense, I think what this is saying is...
I just see the little tool they use to measure the radius for the clamps on the side of the trees to, excuse me, get the diameter.
Yeah, calipers. And what we're, what we're really doing here is we're kind of hiding what the, what the effect of this rule is. Is it, you know, are we talking about two feet for each inch of the diameter of the trunk, I'm applying the two feet to a radius, so you immediately double it to four feet, radius is half of the diameter.
Right, but why do we even say, why is radius in there? Why not just say two feet for each inch of diameter of the trunk?
So they've always said, that's how, the terminology they've always used, but at least in my mind it did.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you wanted to, if you wanted to have an example in there, you, you could say, okay, if this tree is 12 inches in diameter, that means that you have 24 feet protection from the trunk of that tree out, that's in that...
From the center of the trunk or from the...
From the center of the trunk.
From the center of the trunk. That example would be great. I might not be the only math guy who challenges persons reading trees, there might be others.
I do think Commissioner Burnt's idea of keeping it radius, radius or diameter, diameter had, probably has some sense, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's keeping those great.
Yeah, I mean, I would take a geometry since I was a sophomore in high school.
Well, I had a tutor, I'm so bad.
I should have had a tutor when we got there.
We should send you out to major.
Are we satisfied that we, we trust Jill to write that and somebody's going to, everybody's going to read it when they get their packet next month?
Well, Jeff can, can, yeah.
Anything else?
And just to make sure I understand the changes that you want, it goes into the definitions, so taken out of this, it's added to chapter 1704. The diameter, radius, use the same measure?
If that's possible, yeah.
Yeah, I would think so, unless the tree folks would tell me, tell Jeff otherwise. And then the third thing is to include an example, thus a tree...
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you wanted to, if you wanted to have an example in there, you, you could say, okay, if this tree is 12 inches in diameter, that means that you have 24 feet protection from the trunk of that tree out, that's in that...
From the center of the trunk or from the...
From, from the center of the trunk.
From the center of the trunk, that example would be great. I might not be the only math guy who challenges persons reading trees, there might be others.
I do think Commissioner Burn's idea of keeping it radius, radius, or diameter, diameter, had, probably has some sense, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's keeping those great.
Yeah, and I would take a geometry since I was a sophomore in high school. Well, I had a tutor, I'm so bad. I should have had a tutor when we got there.
We should have sent you out to major.
Are we satisfied that we, we trust Jill to, to write that and somebody's going to, everybody's going to read it when they get their packet next month?
Well, Jeff can, can, yeah.
Uh, anything else?
And just to make sure I understand the changes that you want, it goes into the definitions, so take it out of this, it's added to chapter 1704. The diameter radius uses the same measure?
If that's possible, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would think so, unless the tree folks would tell me, tell Jeff otherwise. And then the third thing is to include an example, thus, a tree with a 12-inch diameter has, whatever it is.
See, if that was in there, we wouldn't have had to ask those questions.
Would you like a picture too?
I'd love it.
Actually, would you like an actual picture?
Is that going to be in color? We can make a pop-up in the code.
Yeah, pop-up, that'd be great.
Okay, we agreed on that. Okay, now we are at good of the order.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. But, the first part of good of the order isn't good of the order, it's ongoing planning items, so we got any ongoing planning items?
Uh, none to report. I'm su, I'm sure there are ongoing planning items, but there are none to report. Uh, Jeff will come back with reporting in January.
Good, okay, now we're at the good of the order part of the good of the order.
All right, I have a question, Chairman Lundey, about the letter that you wrote to the council in opposition to all, it seems to be, I didn't see the letter, so I don't know what it said, but I heard that it was sort of negating what we did on the doom rating plan, and my question is, why? I mean, you voted for it, so why did you write the letter in opposition? And how will that, and my question to, to the attorney is, is that going to affect in any way the vote that we took or the action that we took as a commission?
I'm, I'm happy to answer that in any order, it might make sense to, to...
Okay.
From my understanding, the planning commission made their decision and made it in, you know, that's a final decision unless you do something to reconsider, or it's a unanimous vote in favor of sending it to the, the city council with the recommendation that came along with it. And that is the official action of the planning commission.
Okay, good.
Each of you are citizens of Cannon Beach and are free to, you know, continue to talk to the city council if you want. You want to be careful about explaining yourself or doing other things. It's not as imperative in legislative matters as quasi judicial. If you had done this in a quasi judicial, I'd, it'd be a very different discussion, but, you know, still, you can talk to the city council, make your views known. The ideal place to do it, if you're going to express yourself as a planning commissioner, is in, is in this body and in the minutes and in your deliberations there. But if you choose to follow your prerogative as a, as a citizen of Cannon Beach, you're entitled to have a, you know, make your views known to the, to the city council. And for what it's worth, we do have copies of the recommendation as well as Chair Lundey's letter, for those of you who may not have seen it, just to make sure we're all working from the same information.
Okay.
Well, and I was at the retreat where this was provided to the council. Just one, so that I have received it ahead of time.
Okay.
Uh, I, I'll let you read it first, see, see what I say. I probably should have kept my copies of that, just so I could see what you... I assume that I could, the same things I draw, maybe, make it. Okay, if, if anybody wants to have a discussion with me about this, I would be happy to have it as a private conversation, but I don't think it's, uh, the, the commission. Uh, we had our extensive discussions, we arrived at what we wanted to communicate as a commission to the city council, and we delivered that to the city council. If, if I didn't make it clear that this was my view in the discussions, I'm mistaken. I thought that I had, and, uh, I'd be hap, I would be happy to have a, a private conversation with you about that, but that...
I don't see that as private.
I don't think that that's...
I don't think it's private because it's undermining or actually turning on what I believe was the real discussion amongst the counselors or commissioners, and I feel like it's, um... If you had wanted to say these things, you should have said them at the meetings we had, the tons of minutes of meetings, and not gone, I mean, I feel, to me, it feels like...
I, I thought I did.
Gone behind your back and just sort of negated everything that we talked about. I mean, there's statements in here that are very disturbing to me, like a discussion about rich, entitled people. We never, I don't ever recall, if you couldn't go back in the minutes and find something that said someone's saying, well, a bunch of rich, entitled people, I don't think that was ever part of the discussion. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I just find this to be deceitful, I do, that's how I feel.
I think that's a conversation that you and I should have, rather than have as part of the good of the order.
Well, this is a, this is, I mean, you're the chairman of the planning commission, and then right after discussions, you write this as if we had, you know, tied you up and held you hostage and made you, made you vote, I mean...
Well, I, I guess what bothers me about it is that, you know, the rich, entitled, I mean, I think that's just... I don't think anybody had ever said that in this body, but, um, what bothers me about the letter is that coming from the chair of this commission, it really can, it's really going to be confusing to the city council, open to all kinds of interpretation. And, and so undermines the unanimous opinion that we had, to to any extent undermines what the subcommittee, uh, which you were on, who asked. You know, that doesn't mean that you don't have the right to, to, to say this, I mean, I'm a pretty extreme First Amendment kind of guy, but, um, I think it really is, is messy and will only serve to confuse the city council when they look at the, the amendments that we've gone through and spent hours and hours and hours of mind-numbing and eye-blinding time accomplishing. And I don't know what to do, I mean, I, you know, I don't know what to do about it.
It can do, but it misrepresents our reasoning. I don't think we did all that work and came up with conclusions we came to because we were trying to stop rich, entitled people from having our views, and that's what that sounds like. We did it, I'd say, purely on environmental reasons. That was, I think that's really what people were, were concerned about ultimately in this whole thing. And, you know, I, it, it sounds, it makes it sound like, you know, we're just, there was a whole other agenda there. And, and you as the chair were here for it, so you, you know.
Well, I mean, the thing that, the thing that bothers me is that as commissioners, we're trying to trust one another and be as transparent as possible. And so I find this letter the ultimate hypocrisy of what we've been doing for months and months. It's totally out of, if you, if you had a, if you had, if you had expressed those views in our final vote, then, then I see no reason why you wouldn't have gone to city council and they have an opening to discuss this and present a different view, but the way this comes on, it jeopardizes all the procedural stuff that we've been doing for the last year.
I can only say that that was certainly not my intent, that I, that, this is what I perceived as what I heard, and also that the, the view that I present in here, in my recollection, I, I didn't pound on because I didn't see it used to, I, because at least it was clear that that was not what the eventual outcome was going to be. But that I did express that. So, again, I don't, I, this is, this is more discussion of it than I had hoped to have. In fact, I had thought of, uh, saying something before the meeting started that I really did not want to have this discussion this evening.
With all due respect.
Was open to a personal conversation with anybody who wanted to have one.
Well, I have trouble trying to understand why you didn't expect that we would all want to talk about this because it, I looked up Wikipedia, which is sort of an interesting thing, and it says that a dissenting vote frays the decision, and I think that that's a shame.
But it's, a dissenting vote what?
Frays, rips apart the decision of our group. And, um, I do have one other thing that concerns me, and that is that, um, the opinion that was provided to the city council at the retreat, the, um, time was the 29th at 1:14, and your letter was written on the 29th at 3:12. So, it seems to me that it would be pretty difficult to put that all together in an hour. So, I just think there's a little more thought you probably put into this.
Surely.
And, um, it's disappointing that you didn't share how you felt with us as a...
I, I'm sorry that that did not come through.
It didn't at all.
Not at all, not even, I mean, this is completely out of my field for me. I had no idea you were thinking any of these things, and I, and I can't believe, I'm sorry, I, I know I'm really blunt, but, I mean, I, I just can't believe, I feel betrayed as a commission. I mean, that's really how I feel.
I'm, I'm sorry that you feel that way, I did, I did not, it was certainly not in any way my intention to betray anybody.
Well, it seems to me that at this age, you know, the members of the commission can go to the council meeting and make sure that the commission's majority, well, unanimous opinion is enforced and, uh, and say whatever they want about, any questions about your letter, which seems to be at odds with so much of your other work, and, uh... Who knows how this will be, I think it'll, it'll open up all kinds of interpretations of what really happened and how close that'll be to reality is up to anyone to figure out. I, I just think, I think it's just unfortunate, like I said, that I, you told the subcommittee that you were planning on writing up a minority report, a letter, I, I wish I would have been... I was sort of blind-eyed, why I didn't, I didn't expect it, didn't understand it, and, and understand your motivation and so forth until I read the letter, and, um... You know, I, I fear it would be used as probably a common question, the actual position, what the unanimous rate is.
To be clear, what, what will be communicated to the, to the city council was a unanimous vote of the planning commission, and I think, yeah.
Sheriff, if I can, just for a moment, for the record, first thing, Dennis, city manager, it won't have anything really to do with this discussion, but I just want to, um, make it clear what happened when we received the information. We had what's called a retreat, and we kind of talked about what's going to be coming up for the year, and the document that I had in my hands, I don't know if it was final, but I did take it to council because we were going to talk about forward management, and I wanted to talk about, you know, that there was this additional message put on, and so we talked potentially about process, that sort of thing. So, when, that's how it got to the council, it was more of a, this, this is going to be coming your way, I want to talk about it now, well, we have the opportunity, that's what this meeting is for. And so that was the intent, and that was the result, is that we just talked about some options on how to move forward, recognizing it had not been finalized, to my, to my knowledge, um, and that it was, it was tentative until we had the final report from Planning Commission.
When, when you say the addition, I don't remember what you phrased, like something like additional, that, that was the additional memo that was prepared by the, that was drafted by Mr. Kowaisman and then rewritten by the committee of the three of us, saying that the city council should, uh, consider not allowing doom rating for views?
I want, I'm trying to be as, as precise as possible. My recollection was at the time, the document that I had, I didn't think had been finalized, but I think it was something that possibly Bill had put together that kind of set the, the intent, and that's what we passed on, and in the discussion with council, it was, this, this is subject to change, but you need to know that, you know, this, this consideration is there. So, when we talk about forward management, this is something else that we're going to have to plan for, or may have to plan for. So, again, I'm just trying to explain, I don't think, I, my, my thought was it was not the final at the time, it was the, the, the most recent that we had, and it was just, here's a draft, something that's coming up.
See, I thought we had, I mean, we, it, it was the final, what we voted on.
That was after November 29th, right?
The retreat was on the 3rd.
Of December, and so it was the final.
And the 29th is when this was written.
Right.
I'm just saying that the one that I had, I didn't know was final. It might have been because, I don't know if I'd seen Chairman Lundey's note or whatever, but my, my only point was with them, I don't know if this is final. "I don't know if this is final or not. It may be, but this overall situation is coming forward to you." So that's all I'm trying to explain.
What my question is, if there'd been any other letter from any other citizen, like someone who lived at Breakers Point or anywhere, objecting to this plan, would that have been included as well? Or is it just because it was Chairman Lundby from the planning commission who'd written this so-called dissent? Then that's why it was included? I mean, because other letters weren't included in the packet, just that one?
Ms. Kerr, I honestly don't recall. I can have a check to see what was in the packet. I know that it was my intention to put the draft of the statement in. I don't recall. Maybe... Was the letter in there also?
Yes.
Okay. Then apparently I had one at that time. And yes, it was put in because it was the chair. If it was just a citizen from Breakers Point, they would not have read that.
And that's my...
I should have made it... I wasn't thinking in terms of this retreat.
Oh, sure. I know. Yeah.
I should have, if I had been conscious of that, I would have specifically said, "Since this is not coming from the commission, it should, you know, at all points be made clear that this is not a statement from the commission. Not on behalf of the commission."
Right. I just went with what I had and what there was. There was two things happening. And one was not directly related to the other. But I wanted to explain how that happened and what my thought process was going into that. And that was, it was like, "Let's wait and see what comes out, and then we'll move forward." I don't recall the timing on anything being finalized. I don't remember when I got your letter, anything like that. It was just a, "Council, just to let you know, this is coming down the road."
Understandable. Yeah.
All right.
But I guess this is my question again to everybody. Because that's how it happened. And that's how it came about. I'm wondering if it undermines our unanimous decision in any way. I don't see how it can't affect the council. Because here we make this decision after months and months, and everything's done. And then, all of a sudden, there's this letter that sort of give an equal weight with what we turned in.
Like a certain mission.
Well, whether it should or it shouldn't, that's how it looks. It's an appearance that I'm concerned about. And I think that... I'm just worried about it. I don't, you know, should we submit other letters? I don't know. I just... To me, it's not a good way to do business.
Part of the problem here is trying to give heads up to the council before the final product is ready. It's not like we get, you know, the drafts of council materials that have some effect on ordinances or something ahead of actually getting the final material to look at that the council are sending us. And I think...
The decision at that point had been made by the commission to send a statement. And so that being... And again, the final is, to my knowledge, had not been done. But when we were having a council retreat to talk about what's going to happen for the upcoming year, I think that I would be remiss not to mention that here's something that's already been passed, maybe changed in draft form. And this is, you know, a letter. Apparently, I did include the letter. But so I felt that I needed to, to put that in. I couldn't just say in February or whatever, you know, "Oh, I didn't tell you this because..." Because you had taken official action. And it was in the minutes, all those things. So it was out there. And so in my mind, we had to talk about, okay, now how... There was no discussion about the content. It was, okay, how are we going to handle this when it comes to us? And, Ms. Kerr, the only thing I can say is that there was no discussion about the relative merits of it. It was like, yes, here was something, you know, a letter. But here is the, I don't know what we call it, the attachment or whatever, to whatever's going to be coming forward. And so there was no discussion. I can't say whether it influenced anybody equally or more or less. But we didn't... There was no discussion at our meeting about that. How did this happen, that sort of a thing. It's like, "This is coming your way."
Right. But it's sort of... I mean, I just never see, you know, it's a majority. It's actually unanimous ruling by the commission. And then there's this other thing. And that's not how... That's not how democracy works, you know?
You know, I think... The thing to take away from it is the commission has not started their consideration. As the city manager said, they haven't discussed the merits. They got the letter, they got the idea that this is coming their way. I apologize. The city council has not started their merits. You know, what is going to be presented to them is a unanimous recommendation of the planning commission.
And this letter.
Along with every other letter from owners of Breakers Point, of citizens throughout the city and, you know, wherever else. And, you know, the council is going to put the weight on it that they're going to put on it.
Well, this letter... My point is, that letter should not have any more weight than somebody who lives at Breakers Point or the head of Friends of Cannon Beach. It should have no more weight than that. But because of the way it was done, it does have more weight. And that's what worries me.
Well, the fact that the council didn't get a pile of letters like this, which would include alphabetically or phonologically or whatever, Bob's letter, all of a sudden, it's suggesting some kind of division on the commission, which didn't exist.
Right. Or that we had some kind of really creepy motivation for everything we did, like, you know, trying to undermine the rich people. I mean, it just... It's creepy. Sorry. I just...
I'll just say one last thing. The information that I gave them was public record. It was something that you had voted on and said, "We are going to go ahead and say this and provide this direction." And so that was the limit of the discussion that we had. And it's the same thing. I mean, I'm in a difficult position when there's handoffs to be done because y'all are supposed to finish your work and then the commission kind of starts, your council starts with what they're going to do. But I don't think I'm doing my job if I say, you know, "Well, here's a surprise." I didn't tell you about that surprise. And I really can't tell you why. And then, if there is a letter, then that it's a public record to be able to say later, "Well, I didn't think you needed to see that."
No. I understand that. I'm not actually faulting you for what I am finding... What bothers me is that that letter was written at all at the time it was written. That it was sort of right, piggybacking right on top of our decision. That's what bothers me. If Chairman Lundby wanted to write a letter when, you know, right before the meeting, like everybody else does, or make testimony before, as an individual citizen, that's cool. I mean, obviously. But that's not how it happened. It was like, it was written as a dissenting opinion. This isn't the Supreme Court. I mean, there's, you know, it's a... We're voting, and the majority rules on this commission. And there is no dissenting opinion. There is an opinion later on as an individual citizen when things are, you know, all coming to fruition and they're making a decision. But at this point, piggybacking it right on top of our work, I just, well, you know, I just don't think it was everything to do.
So I guess we get to the point of, you know, how do we move forward from here? I think maybe the thing to do is, you know, to adjourn the meeting if you want to have further discussion. And then come back to it in, you know, January, perhaps. You know, we can't unring the bell that the commission has seen the letter. And, you know, maybe I can talk to Jeff and see if we have any thoughts about how to deal with it. And if you have other ones, we can also discuss that in January and where we go. You know, the letter was there. It was provided to the council. And, you know, we're going to have to move forward with the recommendation that the planning commission has made. And we'll deal with it moving forward.
Thank you. Yes?
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question?
When you come up to the chair, please, and identify yourself for the...
I'm Citizen Barb Knopf at Post Hops, Box 658, Cannon Beach. What I'm wondering is, were there other letters that should have been presented at the time of Bob Lundby's, before the December 3rd retreat? Have anybody... Other letters been received?
As I understand it, and Jeff would be able to answer it more definitively, that, you know, there's a whole stack of letters from throughout the planning commission's considerations, both in favor, opposed, neutral, all over the place.
That's not my question.
I understand that. This is kind of... So... And those all came in several months ago. This letter came more or less simultaneous with the written recommendation. And so that was the only one that was presented to the council at its retreat.
Have the other letters already been presented to the council?
No.
But were any letters from the time you guys made your decision on...
I would be surprised if there are any other letters that came in during that period.
Okay.
You know, the record was not open.
I'm not aware of any letters... I'm definitely not aware of any letters from any board members, councilmen or commissioners.
So there were no other letters at all except for Bob's?
That came in during that period?
That came in.
That's my understanding. Yeah. And Jeff could answer that definitively.
Okay. Thank you.
And Barb, had there been letters from residents or something? I don't think they would have risen to the level as from a board member. So there may have been some. But those would come in as we get into the subject matter.
Okay. Are there other matters? Other matters of... Where is the order?
Well, something that I want to...
Yeah.
I found out this meeting had been canceled. I wrote a letter, an email, that suggested that it's census of the public body. And we had a public announcement. And we were informed that we'd be having this meeting. I didn't think it was fair to the public or to the members, you know, as the volunteers on city committees to just decide to cancel, you know, the planned meeting. And I still believe that I just want to reinforce that opinion here. I think it's bad. We have a reason. You know, it's nothing on the agenda. Or it's, you know, an international holiday. But, you know, two days after Christmas is not a holiday. It's part of a period when some people take vacations. But it's not a holiday. I just think it's wrong to shift the public calendar around that way. And maybe a better way of handling days like that is to set the calendar in advance for the whole year. So we know exactly when the meeting is going to be scheduled. And if there's a reason that's related to the content or non-content of the agenda, then, you know, that's one thing. We can announce that maybe a little bit ahead of the period of the time of meeting. But I don't think we should ever be putzing around with the calendar of the commission. I just think it's unfair to the public. It's unfair to the members of the city committees generally.
Are there any other items for the good of the order? Okay. Scene is...